This conference will now be recorded.
Of course, I have some business. There's no one addressing the board this evening directly, so we'll start with the village board minutes. We have both the meeting Tuesday, February 16th and Monday, March 1st. I did not see any additions or corrections. Anyone else? Motion, Art?
Second.
Second. Call motion. All those in favor of adopting the minutes presented? Any opposed? Thank you very much. Next item we have, I'm going to ask Anita to speak too.
Well, this is our Public Employer Health Pandemic Plan for both the village and the town. If you read through it, I'd say it's about 80% identical, but then there are parts of it where we each have to specify our own employees and some practices are just very slightly different for the purpose of how we conduct our business as the village versus the town. This is a requirement by the governor. I believe April 1st is the date by which it was absolutely required to be ready. And I think it's ready now. All the unions have agreed to it. And all the senior staff have agreed to it. So now we just need for all of you to officially agree.
Hold on. Peter, seconds. Further discussion or comments on it? It is interesting when you look at the layout of this plan, it pretty much mirrors exactly what happened starting last March 14th through 15th. So I think to a large extent, this is just simply documenting the impact of this pandemic and putting it into print so that if it ever happens again, it's there. I understand that this will be distributed to...
It needs to be distributed to all employees and posted to our website.
So along with that, this would become one of the many village policies that get looked at and reviewed from here to the year.
Right.
Am I correct?
Yes. Yes.
Any other questions, comments? Anita's the expert on this one. If not, we have a motion in a second. Call a motion and all those in favor of adopting this Public Employer Health Emergency Plan for the village of Lake Classic as presented? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The next item we have is a project that's been on the drawing board for considerably long time. Worked on from time to time and then somehow it seems to get set aside because other things take precedent. Anita, did you want to comment on this a little bit?
There's not too much to comment on, although it's been a while since we've looked at it. Everyone in this room has previously looked at it. Honestly, it was finished up really by my predecessor already. And then Janet had a few more things she wanted to look into and dragged on. But now I believe we are all set to... And her last question was, has Mike already said, "Lacy hit?" And I double-checked with him that Ellen had spoken with him. So I think we are set. And then, you know, this will become our general code, which will go online and make it easier for people to look up our laws. We'll each get a hard copy of it in case we still like hard copies. Some of us do.
Okay. So what this resolution proposes is that these recommendations of general code, which for the most part bring our local laws into conformance with existing New York state regulations.
That's what Mike said. That's why he didn't think there was any problem with any of this.
So therefore, this resolution would propose for a public hearing to be held on March 29th at 5:00 in the afternoon. And following that, we would adopt Local Law Number 1 of 2021 as it relates to all of the upgrades for our local laws. So with that said, the first step is to set the public hearing. I've actually, we've actually set it as March 29th for a couple of reasons. We have another required document that we have to deliver to the state, which is the Police Reform, which currently is out for public consideration. It's in draft form.
In your packet.
And we would be adopting that on March 29th, assuming and making any changes that the public suggests, which we may deem pertinent. And then that would be adopted and then immediately be forwarded on to all the need to fulfill that so that we don't get short-changed on any funding with the state.
If there are any changes, let's say if somebody makes a comment. End of public hearing on 29th. And we as a group think it's a good idea. We tell Billy, Chuck, you know, we have to rewrite this and this.
Well, actually, it's two separate things because the public hearing is for the general code. I don't think the public hearing is for the police.
This is not a public hearing document. This is out right now for a period of 10 days for public comment.
The question is, what if somebody has a comment that we all agree with? We're not supposed to have a change?
We're able to make those changes at the 29th.
That's 29th. Do you have Billy and Chuck here?
Yeah, this is a little different. This doesn't, the reform thing doesn't require a public hearing. It's not a local law policy. So I'm looking forward and hoping that we do get some public response. As you may recall, we did a specific event at the conference center. Unlike some communities, we didn't get any response whatsoever. So we'd ask for a motion authorizing the setting of a public... Actually, I don't even know if we need a motion as such, but they've got it as a vote, so we'll do it that way.
Yeah. But I think the vote will be at that meeting on the 29th.
That's correct.
Right. We don't need to vote for it tonight.
Well, we're simply setting the public hearing.
Oh, okay. That's fine. Yeah. Sorry.
So as long as we're all agreed on the 29th at 5:00, for that matter, we can move on with that. Consider that public hearing set. It was interesting. I heard you mention Ellen Clark's name as part of the history of this general code project.
She did.
It's been a while.
How long did it go on for?
It predated Ellen, actually. When you look at the original contract, it was with...
We started with Coke.
Who?
And that was the minutes. And then we elected to codify our local laws and we're finally, I'm sure General Code will be thrilled.
Well, they're getting paid either way, so they're probably happy to get the grant.
I'd rather they get paid the results.
Good job for everybody.
Okay, moving on to item E. We have a service agreement from Kestner. We see this one every year, and this is a service agreement to address the five floors of the wastewater or sewer plant. The proposed cost for the year is $4,507.17. In any event, and plus any additional parts in the hearing, this would be added. It's a very necessary part of keeping that plant safe for staff, so I fully support it. So, motion, Art? Any further discussion on it? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, we've got a whole series of training things, and each one of them is different, as you can see. Anita, would you prefer that we take them separately?
It's up to all of you. It doesn't matter to me either way.
Say we take them all at once? If the board is fine too, they're all, they all have a similar nature. They're all for required training in order for our personnel to maintain their water plant operators licenses.
So that G through will take?
Yes.
So move.
Heard.
Well, under discussion, as you said, three of the four are approved. Are you willing to house any of them?
Not that I could have them for a backyard garbage. You know, it was interesting because Brad and I were discussing, I don't know, just discussing Peru generally, I guess. And he complimented Peru on telling a really good water program. I did not know that. I remember my wife one day pointing out to me where the reservoir was over in one of the side hills. That's as much as I know about it at the time, but Brad says we've got a really good operator. So we have a motion.
Second and a third.
Second, again, not second and a third. Items, actually, it's F through J.
Yeah, that's right. Yep.
So we'll call it motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any? Any not in favor? Any extensions? That just made that list look a little shorter. No, the next item we have is a request for their allocation of funds for the Lake Classicification organization, which does all the plantings and maintains them on Main Street. You've all, I believe, you've all received a copy of the letter and this copy of the typical agreement that we provide. With that letter, they have provided costs for the several different sites in the village they maintain and the planters that hang off the poles, showing that in a normal year, this is not a normal year, but they were showing total of $35,000, I think, for $14, if I remember right. And over the year, over the 12 years that most of us have done here at the table or around the table, even the last eight years, the allocation for product and labor has been $28,000. It's been, it hasn't changed, but in the meantime, the cost of product has gone up. Cost of labor's gone up slightly, and they're pretty affordable with their money. But we've also added gardens and other locations that have contributed to that increase in costs. So this year, the number one Main Street Park will be under, the Main Street project work will be pretty much torn up. So I've suggested to her that that's a $2,000 expense that she can not concern herself with because they'll be putting the retention thing in there this spring. And then they hope that we'll approve a plan to allow them to restore that park over July. I don't think we can have all the information that we need from Brad's looking for.
Or else we can purchase some hanging planters. We can look along the construction.
Yeah. So what I would recommend is that we increase the allocation. This would have to be in the upcoming budget. No, I'm sorry. They haven't used the current year yet. So they have 28 available. Yep, with the board's pleasure, I'm recommending that we increase their allocation to 32, which...
From 28, right?
From 28. And then we take the additional $4,000 from some contingency funds that are in the general fund bucket. That was...
So they haven't spent it last year as well?
Well, it's the current, it's current.
They would have got a different budget year. They're not so...
Yeah. They take their money just about the time they're going out and beginning to order product. So with that said, I did check the budget. This year's budget amount of 28 is available.
So you want to do budget adjustment?
Like to do a budget. I'd like to authorize in the motion of budget adjustment to bring it up to 32.
She spoke with Mindy, too.
Well, I'll move that. What we're moving is the budget adjustment.
Ends this overall agreement.
Yeah. Are we looking to move up? Then they will come on a new presentation over the next fiscal year for the village for 35.
Well, actually, here's what's going to happen. I had some discussion with Sharice a few days ago. Quite late. We have not yet addressed the issue of, as Main Street itself finishes, those bumpouts are going to have landscaping, shrubberies, probably not flowers. But they'll also contain street lamp poles, face stations, probably...
Artwork?
Artwork signage. So we're not in a position where I could answer the question about who's going to take care and maintain that because obviously there'll be some impact if her organization is to do it. And quite honestly, at the moment, absent some other plan, we have to look at that as being a likely option. But that's not for this board to determine. That's going to be for future board. So with that said, I think the motion that's on the table to create a budget adjustment so that we can increase their allocation this year to 32,000 is what we would be holding on.
And I know we've had countless discussions regarding the Main Street project. You said that you may have been in communications with Sharice as far as, are they going to be, I would say, fluid in how they address Main Street and beautify it as the project goes along? Like, if we had those discussions?
During construction?
During construction.
They are going to, they are going to maintain as much as they can. I had Brad sit in on the meeting so that any issues that he foresaw, they will be able to reach the stuff. Other than one Main Street park, they're going to continue to do what they do.
So they got a shed sidewalk to change this spring. Oh, yeah. It was just, they want them to put something up and then all of a sudden they're like, oh, they're going to take it down.
The bulk of the work this summer is being done in the West Lane, so I understand it.
And the one in the middle of the road.
Yeah. So yes, we'll have, we'll have what should look like, from their perspective, a fairly normal year, with the exception that she will be removing whatever materials they have in one Main Street park before they get removed with the six titties. Overall, I think the benefit of this organization to our community speaks for itself. Many, many people have commented on the appearance of the village. The trick will be to see if we can make people notice the beautification while the construction's going on. We'll call, we'll put that, we'll put her work there under a term called perseverance. So I have a motion on the table in a second. If there's no further discussion on that topic, call a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sharice will be very pleased. Next item we have, each year we allocate in the budget $5,000 for Lake Classic Symphony. Who puts on a series of concerts amidst park. They're proposing to do a series of concerts this year. They've given you a great deal of information with respect to what the costs are for them to do it. Not all of that money comes from us. But just the park series, doing it this year where they will be streaming at the front turn?
Yes.
The concerts. And to pay the, they prorate the salary they pay to musicians and conductors that come here for the summer and for the rehearsals is a $57,000 cost, not all of which comes, obviously, from the village. But they do produce other funds and they have a pretty significant support group of people who either serve on their board or serve as advisory that... If you look down the list, you recognize most of the names. So what we're looking at for this year, and I think the last sentence of the first paragraph is significant here. They recognize that we generally contributed a stipend of $5,000 a year to pay for those series of concerts that they provide the village. And then they're adding, "If possible, we ask the village consider an increased amount of support due to the extraordinary circumstances that this year presents." I don't know how you feel about that, but I think you've all got the material in your packets.
What are they asking for?
No specific amount, just an increased amount. And I guess the question, looking at 11, 11 and a half thousand dollars that is necessary to hire somebody to be able to stream these concerts. I don't think there's any dispute that this is a much appreciated resource in the community. On the other hand, we have other accounts. I know we have Songs of the Late that we have supported, although I and we've supported them to the extent this year so far of printing the dates that they might also be performing. Although that's also...
Is that money they're looking to get before August or in the next quarter?
We normally advance the money to the Symphony. Usually just as, their season starts really with the, I think, the closing of schools.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we usually begin to check it this time of year. Mindy, is that right? Do you know off the top of your head?
Yeah, I think so. I can double-check just to see when the actual check goes out, but I think it's around this time every year.
They also, the contract with the village for those concerts, which are considered service. So I don't have any way of really judging this.
Is this something that they would move? This is just something just because of the extraordinary year or...
Extraordinary year, one time.
We did not give them any money last year since there were no concerts last year. There had been budget for the first week.
No, we didn't.
We did not. They didn't give them a lot.
It would seem reasonable to cover that 11 and 5, since it's only a little bit more.
So are you suggesting that we do it one time in addition to the normal stipend, another five, which would substantially cover? No comments?
Really? I didn't think the money last year. We didn't spend money last year. Catch-up payment.
And again, there'd have to be, with this one, we have a line item in the budget for them, so it would be a budget adjustment of the difference between the five. Very similar to what we just did for...
Sharice, beautification.
Sharice, right.
Just a lot of people coming, other organizations coming out and saying, "You did this for these people."
Well, I think the salvation here with this one is the fact that they didn't take the money that was allocated a year ago.
Generally, one organization would take it anyway, just walk it away. And you're certain about that, Chris?
Yeah, they didn't even ask. I actually went to Craig and said, "Don't we usually give them this money?" And Craig said, "Not this year."
Well, and they signed, they signed a service agreement with this as well when they do that. So if, if that is correct. Jason? Scott? Any further discussion on that one? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I think they'll probably be thrilled. And actually, you know, this organization celebrated their 100th anniversary just a couple of years ago. They've been around a long time and they certainly appeal to a substantial group of people.
The fits will be very...
Next item we have is a request from the Horse Show Association to recognizing that the Lucy Lot on West Valley Road, which is a snow field, is not going to be available this year to them, are asking for use of the lot behind the firehouse, or beside the firehouse, depending on how you look at it. I checked with Brad and he tells me for what their requirements are for the horse show period. That would, that would be though. Hold on. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the next request is just their regular request to hang their streetlight pole banners starting Monday, June 14th and then removing them Monday, July. Well, so just shy of the month. They submitted, I guess with this, you got a check.
Yes, they already sent a check.
So move. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The extensions? Okay, so that and stuff.
So just to kind of stay in line with, even though this is in the village endorsed, they did submit a plan to the Department of Health.
That is my understanding.
I know that you are...
It's one of the, it's one of the events that looks like it will happen as compared to, we don't know. It's not all we can say about events at this point. Most of the other big ones are still trying to... I know that there's a, the summer events discussion Thursday morning.
Yeah, Thursday morning at 10.
10 o'clock. It's a virtual type meeting.
So I guess you'll get it passed. Whoever the next mayor is, I'll be quick to ask if they have seen it. And if not, looking over and relating to the board.
Well... You know, what maybe, what maybe the next mayor is, is the state is slightly relaxing its standards. So, and you know, it's also interesting. I see every day the county board sends them through to the supervisor and usually shares it. Our, the number of instances of positive test results has dropped weight on today. For example, this one. We seem to be, we seem to be leveling off, but let's just hope the trend continues.
And I would say, don't, I hope that our community doesn't become complacent. Our elementary school is only been closed for over three days. Two full days and two half days out of the whole entire year. And it's because the community has been diligent about it. So you guys keep it, we want to keep it going until June, so please, please.
Well, I think, I think certainly this school's experience has been exceptional when you compare it to other school districts that are struggling.
Teachers and parents and kids. It's not easy. It's not easy.
But also, I think, you know, the whole community has been fairly supportive. I think generally, you know, the use of face masks, distancing. We have to keep in mind the fact that many of our businesses are operating at only a percentage of their normal capacity and they're suffering, you know, certainly a loss of revenues. So the fact that we've been able to maintain a semblance of tourism and normalcy, although recognizing that people still worry, that's natural. I think Lake Classic has a lot to be thankful for in this process.
Just have to get the theater open. We're going to be the final fireworks.
Yeah, yeah, when you see fireworks.
Absolutely right. When I heard mine say that. People hear anything, the public health people, but I'm... Oh, yeah. It'll hurt. It'll hurt. They say, "No." I want everyone to do their part so we can make sure that July 4th, we have this.
Jason, one thing worth mentioning with the horse show, too, is that they've been conducting horse shows through the pandemic. So it's not like their first try and have it. They've got procedures in place. They've been complying with them.
Yeah.
So it's probably one of the better ones for us to demo.
I'm not comparing and contrasting against them. I'm not comparing and contrasting against individual events. It's more of a, again, kind of what I communicated in the email, as long as the board itself, the elected officials have access and input, that we can communicate it to the public at large, because events will come and that will be a discussion. And I feel as leaders, it's our job to provide oversight as best we can and to overlay any fears moving forward, because part of getting back to normal is inviting more and more people to town. So how we do that is going to dictate how well they are received.
Agreed. Item, oh, Anita, do you want to just address that?
Yes, we approved three election commissioners last meeting. There are three more. Martha and Karen will be coming here after their school board meeting, because we anticipate a pretty long evening of vote counting, so they will come here and pitch in. I think a couple of my people who have been here since 11:30 are going to go home. Some are staying the whole time, but yeah, so these three are add-ons to the previously.
It's worth mentioning, you think it's going to go until midnight or 1:00 in the morning?
It could. We've gotten about the same number of absentee ballots that Sarnac Lake had last fall, and they, it took them until 1:00 a.m., so.
You said we're at about 200 now?
201, yeah, and select tomorrow's mail. People can still drop them off. I mean, obviously, at this point, I'm kind of hoping people come and vote in person tomorrow, but if people just wanted to stop by and drop it off, they can still do that.
Well, I'm happy to, based on your recommendations, I'm happy to offer the appointments to the board. Would ask-
These people have been trained?
Yes.
They're all training.
Everyone has been trained at some point. I have, I think, just one person who hasn't been recently trained, but I have worked through the trained list, recently trained list, and people are either unavailable or just not interested in coming in and doing it. And at that point, NICOMS said, just do what you can and get what you can. So the one person who wasn't recently trained worked for me as recently as the fall and has worked for us many times, so I'm not concerned about that.
There was that school board elections too, so Karen, she helps-
Yeah, Karen and Martha are both on the currently trained list, so I'm not worried about them at all. I'm not worried about any-
Mary Merrill, quite frankly, she's been doing it for years.
That's just it, she has.
She's certainly not much of a-
Yes.
There's no further comments or questions on that? All in favor, any opposed?
You know, hopefully, we have the people to count on. No excuses.
Usually, usually a mayor of a year brings out between eight and nine hundred voters, so with 200 absentees, you should still look for a pretty good amount of people. Be interesting to see how it goes. There's one add-on item, Anita, I think Haley Rain, who was the community development officer, is working with Kate Thompson and the communications group. And we're, they're assembling a process for being able to keep the community up to date on almost a daily basis. And part of doing that is setting up a communication so that we can process more than a handful of emails. There's a service that does that called MailChimp, which they are asking us to consider approving. This would become part of the cost, it would be embedded in the cost of the project, I believe.
Both Haley and Kate are on the call in case you have any questions.
And it's, it's cost is estimated to be between $53 and $100 a month. But if I understand it correctly, MailChimp has the capacity to handle 10,000 emails on a regular basis. That's something our system is not doing.
Okay, what is it that they actually do? How does it help us?
So, so MailChimp is a platform that allows us to set up a listserv and create a really nice-looking email template and push it out to community members who subscribe to it. It can handle hundreds of thousands of email addresses, and it doesn't have some of the technical constraints that some of our other platforms have. So the intent is to use it for a daily construction forecast for all of those in the community who would like to get the very detailed construction information each day.
Is there going to be a link on like our website, the town's website?
Yes, there's going to be definitely a link on the village website. I just need to talk to Chelsea about where we put some of the links for the Main Street upgrade on the town website. But we have a Main Street upgrade webpage on the village site, and the ability to subscribe to this daily construction forecast email will be on that webpage, and anybody will be able to get to it.
So in addition, and I think this is Mindy, where Mindy comes in, are we going to utilize the utility building, the text?
Only if they're, and Kate, correct me if I'm wrong, only if it's like a major event. So if we hit a water line or we have a major issue that pops up, we will then blast out the text alerts to people, but those, those cost a fee. If you look at the sheet that was sent around, that's really good, nice, detailed sheet. You know, there are charges that apply from our system, so we would only utilize the text messaging if there is a major event that we need to notify people of immediately.
What is, it says message, message charges apply. What ballpark cost for that sort of?
It's regular text messaging charges, but we would incur the fee because it's all coming from us. Not to mention, we don't have as many cellphone numbers in our system as they may have email addresses. So between the two of them concurrently, I think we can get out an email blast and/or text message if something major occurs, but MailChimp would be the way to go for your daily emails.
I can see, I just, I would like, I would like them to work concurrently if we can start building up a text, a phone number, a cellphone listing.
Well, I've put out on the bills, the bottom of the bills, and we will continue. We wanted to kind of see how things were going to go, that people can give us that information so that we can add it to their, their accounts. Generally speaking, the only time we get any phone number, email address, or, you know, regular dress information, is when the person signs up for their account. Now, if they pay online and something wonky goes with their email address, they will call us and say, hey, you need to fix it for me. But everyone who has, and it was sent out to them, everyone who pays online was supposed to receive an email about our text messaging. We're just, we're working internally, trying to figure out how to best push it out to our customers, because the office has been closed, and we don't necessarily have phone numbers on everybody. So we're slowly but surely making that happen. And now that the office is open, it can happen a little bit better, but the only means of communication really we have is when we send the bills out.
One of the things, one of the things we could use this for, Jason, is depending on how we word the ask at the subscription, we could potentially collect email addresses, and Haley and I'll look into cellphone numbers. That could be used to share any municipal business or information. So think of this too as a longer-term base of information that we could use to push out whatever we need to push out. Once we have secured an individual's permission to use their email or maybe even their cellphone for municipal information, then we'll be able to use it, period. Right, Mindy?
Yes.
Yeah, so I would like to, the MailChimp, I understand, and I would support. I would only in a sense that, like, we also create a drive slash initiative to start collecting cellphone numbers as a way to, if we want to, as a way to pilot the bigger sort of situations.
Yeah.
But I want to be able to move those concurrently while we're building. No, it could, it could be, but if we're in a, instead of having a slapshot about whatever municipal, if we really want to pilot this regarding the Main Street project, if we send out a text once a week, and then as it grows, and we can monitor the usefulness in the response.
So usually by law, Jason, when somebody opts in either email or text, there are two separate asks, and there are two separate opt-ins. So we know that the information payload for Main Street is going to be such that an email is the best format, text is not big enough. So maybe what we can do is get started with this email process, and then determine if we had to reach out via text for whatever reason, what the best way to do that is, because that's a separate ask or opt-in by law. You really can't co-mingle the two.
No, I completely agree. I just, to me, it's, and I appreciate your work, Kate, I just, this has been a conversation for two to three years now, and it's becoming more prevalent in every other area of my life regarding either banking or so on and so forth, even the school. Like, just, this, I feel like it's an underutilized or a non-utilized sort of avenue for the village, and the Main Street project would be the ideal sort of pilot situation in order to kind of have a motivation for it. And I know that we're looking at MailChimp as being the primary source, but again.
We can look into it. There's other platforms like Pixel to that support what you're asking for, so we can look into the text route with Mindy. But, you know, there's only so much of a payload you can push out on text, and the village has asked- A good-
Yeah, that has all the email.
We could, we could push out a link back to the Main Street upgrade webpage, and specifically the daily forecast, but the village has also asked us to be able to put something directly in the community's hands if they want to have it, and so that's why we've come to the table with the MailChimp recommendation.
Sure.
We have a motion authorizing the village to enter into a, an agreement with MailChimp to provide the MailChimp service, which will, which will require a monthly fee specifically for the Main Street project at this point.
That's a good question. Kate, how long an agreement is this? Is this for a year or is this by the month?
It's a month-to-month agreement, so we can stop it at any time.
So we can decide if we want to expand it or change it. We can try this, and if it doesn't work, okay.
Yes, and also, also in the, yes, that's right, we can, we can expand it, we can stop it. And we have the ability also to pull down the email address list that's been built with it too, as well, imported over to whatever we're reporting to.
Do they advertise it on these emails? It's $53 a month, so how can they make money?
No, not as far as I know, Peter, they don't.
It would look corny if the village sent out emails updating minutes old.
Well, I understand it.
Banner ads for Amazon or whatever else you've been using on your browser. Yeah.
They're, they're, MailChimp is a cloud-based services. I think they're running on the Amazon platform. I'm not quite sure, but I can check. And they're, they're like the leading mails, email marketing, air quotes, service. They have a global presence, so they're used all around the world.
How do they make money other than $53?
Oh, what I just shared, Peter, was only their email marketing product. They have a whole ton of stuff that they sell as well, way beyond this. This is just for emailing.
What, what are we looking to kick this whole off? Just don't, can we, can we come back in a couple of weeks? Because we got this at like 3:00, and I just didn't really get a chance to really review it. And I do appreciate the recommendation, but if you guys want to move forward with vote, I just don't feel comfortable about it yet, without really reviewing it. I was working with a teacher till quarter after 4:00, then I came up with something. I didn't even have a chance to review it.
How soon do you need it, Kate?
Well, we have a second public information session on Thursday. Construction is right around the corner.
Yeah, okay. And if we don't like it, we want to change, we can always just cancel our subscription. So I'm sure you've researched it, and what you're comfortable with. You've put a lot of work into this.
Yeah, propose that we, what's, April, May, June, July, August, maybe do six. Revisit them. Well, I don't want to have them do all the work and then just throw it away. It might take a month or two to build up.
They're going to tell us if it doesn't work.
How long would you, how long, how many months, how many would you say that would not work or work?
Jason, excellent question. I would say, give us the spring construction season, which is about three, four months, because it's going to take a while for people to subscribe. I think it's going to take a little bit for Haley and the inspectors to get into a rhythm on what information is most valuable for Main Street merchants in particular, and for us to sort of get our feet underneath us with using this. So I would say, let's try it for the spring construction season and see what happens.
So you're essentially saying April, May, June, with three or six months? Like, three months, three months?
Three to six months, yep. Three months at the least, six months at the most.
I would make a motion that we do a minimum of three to maximum six.
Which one?
Oh, we can have a-
Thank you, Dick.
Committing it for the whole entire summer, but at the same time, if they're going to take the time to build it up, we should just go fill it out for at least the summer season, then we can, because this project's not done.
So you're saying six months?
I would say max six months.
Okay, second.
Okay.
Yeah, but if they're going to put a lot of effort into this particular, to say, two months.
But if they tell us to pull the plug on it?
Yeah, we can pull, yeah, we can pull the plug. Yeah, but I also want us to have an out in order to-
Okay, six months? You have a six-month commitment, Kate?
That's great. Why don't we work with Anita to get Haley and I back on the agenda? Maybe we're more like six weeks into the construction season. We're also going to hit you all up for email addresses, so we can put you in the initial list too. And you can tell us what you think of the daily construction forecast and how we can improve it.
We need the all of this.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to authorize the village to enter into an agreement with MailChimp to provide email services for a period of time not to exceed six months, present time. I'm okay with it, but I think we really need to look into that.
That's what I was going to say.
There's way too many people in the community that don't do email.
And I agree 100%, and text may have to be-
I get that. You can send a text link, in other words, back to our website. That would open up the document so they could read it.
Exactly.
It doesn't have to be a big text.
You're like, hey, because that's the good, if something dangerous, if something happens, one line breaks, quick blur on the text, see our website with the whole picture.
Yes, that probably is possible, but there are messaging fees with texting. We don't have a way to collect cellphones right now. That's usually a separate platform. Pixel is one of the leading ones that's used for municipal emergency notification. So we can go research that if you'd like.
It's also, this, every time there's a power outage, they ask us, nobody knows it. We have no way to communicate with the public. If we use that service for, in the future, kept the service, if you will, and use it for other things as well.
We can. It's just, it's just that, you know, when you do, when you do, when you, when you're embarking upon a couple of different communications activities, it's always a good guide to use your, keep your audience in mind, and how much information are you pushing to them? Not all communications channels are equal. So using text for things like emergency notifications, or Instagram, or Twitter, heaven forbid if we just enter into this tweet world, is, you know, is great for that. Yeah, but it's great for that, but it's those- Yeah, but it's great for that, but it's, those channels are really difficult. When you're trying to lay out, here's the construction activity that's happening at specific addresses over the next three business days. Here's the impact to the utilities. Here's the impact to accessibility. Here's who you need to call in case of emergency. When you, when you push something like that out, the channels like texting are really difficult and hard for the end user to use. Email is much better. So you can always, of course, put a link and have them go back to the website, but then you're asking them to take another step. So the question is really, what do you want your community's end user experience to be? Do you want to have them go back to a website and open up something? Or do you just want to give them something in their mailbox for Main Street?
Yeah, I, I, I see what you're saying. And it just, it's, it's a matter of how elaborate or how concise you want to be with the information you're going to communicate to the greater public. Some, some individuals would, would desire and benefit from a more elaborate explanation and the consequences of a particular part of a project where some may benefit the fact that like, just don't go down Main Street. Here's the detour, take this detour. So we're trying to keep those two different sort of end users in mind. And I know when you create two different channels, you create twice the amount of work for the people on your end of it. So what we're looking to do is, I guess the reason why I moved that is like, you, you've decided on this and can develop that component. What Scott and I, and I guess even Peter, it's like, can we concurrently explore and come back to the board with the additional method that we can eventually use for Main Street, but also expand it across all emergency services? Or achieve more?
So something that's more short and sweet, more for emergency notification. Sure, we can, we can look into that. And the platform's Nixle, not Pixel. So Nixle is like the leading platform for that, used by towns and villages and states for emergency notifications. And Mindy and I can work on it together too with the utility billing software notification capability as well and kind of put a comparison together.
And I know a lot of work went on your end. And it's just, the vision moving forward would be to get that, there's a power outage. You get a text. Generally, I had AT&amp;T, I had cell service for all about six hours before the generator went out. And then I didn't have cell service if the power outage was beyond a day. So like, because the tower was down or whatever was the case. So we just want to make sure in those extreme circumstances, we get the most amount of information out and that the Main Street could be an avenue where we try.
Yeah, it could be. I, I think we got to just test whatever we learn, Jason. We just have to test it against the amount of information that we're trying to push out too. Because nothing frustrates an end user more than something that's really difficult to use too for the information payload. So it's, it's an art, it's not necessarily a science. We'll just have to, we'll have to try it for that too.
I understand what text messages, if you're trying to elaborate, it's like reading a tweet. That's like six, they go one of six, two of six, three of six, four of six. I'm like, then why don't you just?
To that, right.
You know, I understand what you're saying where it's like, you don't want seven text messages with all the information.
No, because we want to make it easier for people. All these tools, the intention is to make it easy for the audience.
It's like M V T lot is closed, those sort of things.
Yeah.
I know you're just M V T, sorry. Mayor Randall lot is closed today or municipal lot is closed.
We have no order on Main Street today for from 12 to 2 or something like that.
Better to word text that.
Okay. So we're happy to come back to you in a couple of weeks after we start doing this with MailChimp and share with you the status. We're also going to add your email addresses to the MailChimp mailing list too, so you can see what we're sending out. We'd love to hear from you directly, you know, what the good, bad and indifferent. And then we'll look at texting capabilities as well. And come back maybe in two months with that, is that all right?
Thanks for all your work, Kate.
Thank you, Kate, for that. Now, I believe we haven't voted on the authorization yet.
Okay.
The authorization to authorize the Village to enter into a month-to-month service agreement with MailChimp.
Up to six months.
For up to six months. Soon to be revisited.
Yeah, I think, Jason.
All in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? We're good to go. Thank you, Kate, for your work and Haley.
Haley, Mindy.
I was minimally involved in this, they get the credit for this.
If you want to be annoyed, it would be me. And it's like, I would pull my mask down and smile and say, please.
No, no, it's, it's all, it's all really, it's really good. It's all really good conversation. By the way, we are Nixle subscribers as well. We get it on the weather from Texas when we were living in Texas. So it's a pretty good service, but the payload is really small. Anyway, we'll look into it, Jason and Peter. Good, good set of questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your patience with us.
Thank you.
I get that a lot, I don't know why.
So anything?
No, that is all.
If not, we'll move on to second three, the treasurer's group. Mindy, do you have anything you want to comment on aside from the work?
No, I'm good right now.
Okay. In that case, we'll, we'll pick up the matter of paying the bills tonight. Apparate number 15 of the current budget year contained bills totaling $693,530.79. And in addition, electric account refunds to customers totaling $373.31. Relatively small amounts in the electric fund. The item in there is a bond and interest payment. And likewise in the sewer fund, I think we have a bond payment. Be happy to go into more detail if you want, but I think you all have received the.
If you want to do this, this is your last virtual meeting. You are more than welcome and we will sit here and smile like you've earned it, sir. I'm all for it.
In that case, I have a motion authorized.
He's like, he's over.
Second, Scott, all in favor? Any opposed, any extensions?
This meeting going to 9:00, I wasn't even saying a word.
Any items of new business that are not on the agenda already? If not, we'll look at old business. Main Street reconstruction, I think.
March 18?
March 18. There is the second public presentation on the project will be, will be delivered. And that, and the local media will be notified of it. So hopefully people will sign into it. It'll be a virtual presentation. Aside from that, we just covered the biggest item of tonight, I think, which was getting communications for the Main Street project moving. Land use code. Mindy? Did someone wish to speak?
Oh, Mayor Randall, it's Kate again. I thought we were just going to quickly touch on the RFEI for the website, but that might be later on in the agenda.
We have that.
I don't actually have that on the agenda.
Okay. We can actually bring that up. We, we, we have room and time to do that.
Well, I guess, I mean, under old business, local.
Local government communication, right? I don't think there's anything new on land use for short term at this point, Art?
Just that we have, can we have the joint meeting between the Village and the town scheduled for April 8th?
Yes.
That, that's worth mentioning. And at that point, we'll be bringing the land code review committee's recommendations to the Village of Town. They get a chance, both boards get a chance to do input. And they're looking to be like the beginning of May to go out for public hearings.
So the date of the street meeting, you have that?
It really is April 8th, yeah. Isn't that already on the agenda? We'll have to look into that.
That's the joint meeting, right? I, I believe that Lori is putting that notice out.
Good.
So presuming that takes place in the, the next step then would be to start the process of public hearing, which, which you're looking at from May.
Public information hearings, I think that'll be conducted by them. It's just to get public input, yes. And it would have to involve the boards because it's good, it'll be required that the boards listen, hear and people have to say, make decisions, change the law, the government, what they have to say.
Anything else?
None of that. Did you also want me to speak on leave?
I, I do, but let's get Kate's.
Okay.
Will I have leave?
So Mayor Randall, I, I think you and Supervisor Rand have been talking about this, but we've drafted a request for expression of interest for the town and the village websites. It's a, it represents a collection of the requirements for a new website platform. We'd like to be able to send it out. The intent is to gather information from contractors and vendors through their proposals and demonstrations for planning and budgeting purposes.
This is, and we did have, we did have counsel just review it. There is nothing in this that commits any resources of the town or village at this step. This is merely a request to companies that are capable of providing that type of support to let themselves be known. And then I think the next step might be to, if we find, if we find what they're looking for, to enter that into a contract for service. But this is just to find out what's out there, what interest might be out there. Certainly, I can, I can speak for Janet. She looked at this and handed it back to us and said, it doesn't commit the Village to anything at this point in time. So on that basis, I certainly think we should, it, it's a way of finding out what resources are out there that we might be interested in.
And we're asking, as part of the proposal process, we're asking, well, we're suggesting that we're going to ask for demonstrations. One of the most challenging aspects of the current platforms that we have is the content management system. That's everything that runs behind a website that allows people to keep the content up to date. In digital Topath, we're lucky. We have a pretty decent content management system. It's a little bit old in the way it looks and appears and that it's really text-based. But there's, there's a good amount of templates. There's a way to manage objects, things you put on your website, like pictures and documents. And there's also an ability to have two permission levels. So you have one permission level that can do everything and another permission level that can just do so much. Unfortunately, the town doesn't have that at all. And on top of it, the town's interface to make the updates is really, really difficult. So part of the whole thrust of this project is to help make keeping the website up to date really simple. And that's why we will be asking vendors, contractors to come, to do a virtual demonstration so we can really see how the backend works and make a judgment about which ones might be the best fit for the town and the village going forward. So thank you for letting me share that, Mayor Randall. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. As I said, this, this request doesn't commit the town or the village to any, any resource at this point in time, but does provide the information so that Kate and this committee can take it to the next level. So I, I, I guess just for the sake of getting it in the minutes, I'd ask for a motion authorizing it since we're all here. Jason? Did you say yes?
Yeah, I, I have moved to Peter's side.
Okay, Jason, Peter. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Kate, you're, you're good to go on that piece? No, anything else, Kate?
No, thank you all so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Okay. Art, do you want to give us a brief report on the activities of the LEAP program?
I think as everybody knows, that we did many, many meetings on setting up the guidelines. We had two meetings now to review applications that are in. We have a total of 25 of them. And we've already done through 17. We have eight more to do tomorrow. And after those have been gone through, the next thing will be to put them into three baskets, one, two, and three, deciding how many of you want to think are going to happen this time around? How many of you think will be in the second time around? And then the third is down the road. Keep in mind that once we make our recommendations, then those recommendations go to the town board. They're the final say. So this is, the committee isn't going to decide. It's the town board that decides what projects will be used. And I believe that that's going to their workshop on the 6th.
This process is brand new, as we all know. And the, the ultimate approval or denial is, is with the town board. Jay and I were talking about this a little bit today in terms of how we keep our respective boards informed of where they are. It's, it's completely conceivable that we could perhaps share all 25 applications or maybe we share the sports pleasure, the applications that are being moved forward in the approval process.
If I could finish on that, yeah, I, I think we should get out all 25 applications to everybody. I would love everyone's input because this isn't what I decided. It truly should be a board decision.
See, Art is our appointment to that, Art is the Village Board's appointment to.
I'm just believing.
And as, as, as is. A pharmacist.
Dick Cummins.
As, as Dick Cummins is for the town board.
And Haley Breen is also sitting on this.
And Haley sits as, as, she is, she is there, I believe, as part of the development commission role.
And she has a vote, yes.
Right. So anyway, how much, the amount of information that you get and how often you're getting it, I think that is a topic that as a board, we should agree on.
Well, we've gotten to the point now where we do have a matrix of what they are. Group is, how much they're asking, how much total project is. And then once you look at something like that and you have further questions, you can go over to another email and you can click on and they filled out a history on them, what they're hoping to do with this money. And there's six or seven pages in there. But if you take a look, you know, we're probably about, maybe on Friday, we'll be down to try and put these people into baskets. It'd be good to have your opinion.
So already, if you committed 100% of what they're asking from all 25 candidates.
I mean, how much is everything?
How much was the total?
I don't know the answer to that. There's, there's a bunch that we won't be doing this time around, in my opinion. But it's so brand new, we're still trying to, I mean, we put a whole matrix together for how this would work. And now that we get into it, if you follow the matrix, it doesn't necessarily reflect what you would want to do now. So we need to refine it. And it's just going to be like. It's, it's close. I, I think right now there'd be more than what we're asking.
It's more money available?
I, I think, don't quote me on this. I think we have $776,000 of LEAP or that the fund is generated. And I think there's millions of requests.
And that through the end of the year or to the, today?
That's to date, yeah.
Are, are these going to be processed just once a year, Art? Or are they going to be twice a year, sort of like a spring?
Yeah, that's why I say, you know, there's, there's certain projects that, and a lot of them, I think, people just found out about this, it was quick. And they had to get something in fast. And maybe they don't need the money right now. They, I think we want to hit the ground running with projects that we know will be started right away, can go into place for this summer and be a good, good step forward. Things that benefit the community, because let's face it, we, we ask a lot of the community to put up with all the events that we have here. This becomes a direct give-back. 2% of every event we have here is going back to the community. That's how I look at it anyhow. I think it's going to do a lot of good over the years. And if it generated this much money in the middle of a pandemic, it's not inconceivable. It's going to be 1.2 million, maybe plus every year going back into local events. I don't see how we can lose. There's a lot of different, you know, even this time, there's a lot of variety of people that are asking, a lot of events you can help.
Yeah.
Been enjoyable to work on.
I know, for example, what, what, which is. I know, for example, what Butch's team were looking at, a future application maybe involving a replacement of the docks at the beach, which will solve the styrofoam problem. And maybe, I think Butch's team is looking at maybe reshaping the docks a little bit so there's more swimming.
Cornell's working on that, right?
Cornell's working on it.
Their bath is here.
So you're not going to see that maybe until fall off.
And then the work in the spring.
Right. So it can do, it can do some pretty good work, which we might otherwise not be doing.
Another thing with our group is that there's categories. If you're zero up to 50,000 or below, it's one set of questions. If you go above that, it's another set. We do have some that have gone over 50,000, and in that case, we may need to bring the people in, answer questions, and give us a timeline. Do you need all funding in one year? We're brand new, growing teams. But to be honest with you, we have a lot of good talent on the board, a lot of good input, and it's encouraging.
Interesting time to start it. And with all, with all the adverse impacts of COVID, it's kind of a little bit of a, those type of, what's all? So then, is everybody in agreement that if Art were to share the, what he has right now, which is the applications, you'll all be able to see the nature of what's being requested?
I'll get those to Anita in the morning, and I'll have her get them. And like I say, it'll come as two grids, giving you everything, and then another one where you can bring it up and just look and see what the, the write-ups are. And if you have any questions, give me a call.
Okay. Any other old business? If not, we'll move on to just a couple of things. The police reform is out, the draft of the proposed plan is out there on the website. I think, I think it's in your, your package as well. And we will, we will leave it out there for a period of time, which would take it to March 20th at 4:00. Obviously, we're trying to, we're encouraging the public in whatever way possible to add their input to what we have here. And at that point in time, it will come back in, the input will be, to the extent that it's appropriate, the input will be amended to the, to the plan that you see here, and then it will come in front of this board. I'm asking for a special board meeting on Monday, March 29, which in large part is being driven by the fact, we need that amount of time to get this project done. We must deliver this to the state budget office on April 1st. So there's that. Grandad around that hotel, I think they're requesting a closure of the sidewalk in the front of the hotel itself. Does not include the section of the building that Greg Rupert owns that's attached to it. They're working with Brad right now. We're trying to, we're probably going to put a temporary crosswalk, which is at the request, I think, of Greg Rupert. And it looks like something will happen. All of this is, is only closed, I believe, until August. And this is so they can get the facade on the front of that building without hurting any of our pedestrians. So it's, it's moving ahead. We looked at it from the point of view of what we did for Northwood School with that building a year ago, where we put a pedestrian bypass out onto the parking lane, but that doesn't seem to be desirable. We really need to move people right across the street, get them away from the front of that building.
Didn't they want us to prove that, order on this? Like, for them to, because it's, you know, blue sidewalk, is it? It's probably the dead sea sidewalk.
That is, that is not a discussion at this point. The state regulations for Main Street are to put the footwork right away.
So therefore, we have to give them permission to close the sidewalk?
Yes, that's right. We do. So it's, there's always been this debate back and forth, because I guess they paid for their own paper stones. But quite frankly, the beginning of the paper stone era, every storefront paid for its own paper stones, and we provided the labor. But then not everybody paid for their paper stones, and we provided paper stones and the labor to get the sidewalk finished. That's how that all went. But I think, in this case here, if you took a tape measure, a measure from the center of the road, you'll see that a portion of that sidewalk is, in fact, in the public right away, and we should be, you know. And then there's a portion that the hotel has had the dining tables on, but that building, that portion sits back, slightly below.
It's in the plans to get all those grants.
Yeah. So their sidewalks over here will match both sides of the street. You're right, though, we probably should vote on that and just-
I think that's what they were asking for.
Yeah.
They want to build the scaffolding, too.
Yeah. So, no issues. I think, as I said, Brad is, subject to Brad finding a satisfactory-
That's on the Rupert's part, though.
Crosswalk.
This is only on the footprint, all by-
Yeah, but the crosswalk needs to be there for this to be closed.
When we had the Northwood building, that was only two floors high. I mean, we're talking, what, six now? I think closing the sidewalk probably is a good idea.
That could be a good idea.
Yeah, so I'd be all for it.
We were talking about his part. He's got tenants. They want to live.
Yeah, right. But it's one thing, the other part-
His part, it's, it's, no, obvious, probably, probably the Northwoods end.
Yeah.
So I would, I frankly, we certainly can authorize the closure, subject to satisfactory loc, relocation of a crosswalk, to satisfy the adjacent property owner.
So move?
Second?
All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed?
I'll remind Brad that you probably did already, like, DUT, we have permission.
I know he's been working on it.
Is this another building now with a shared wall inside? Two different buildings?
I mean, the two, one building.
So, yeah, I imagine they have a shift in those.
Okay, covered the special board, board meeting. Do we need, for the record, do we want to put that in as a motion?
We can. Yeah, I mean, we did a motion for the public notice, but we could, we could do the same for the meeting.
So just, just one more meeting. For the purposes of conducting business that can't be conducted prior to the next board meeting, I'm requesting a special village board meeting to be conducted on Monday, March 29. And because we have a public hearing at 5:00, I'm suggesting that this meeting will start at-
I think we can just say to follow the public.
To follow the public here, okay. That would work.
Time will tell.
You never know. I think following the public hearing on the general code project probably would make the best sense.
I think so.
Do you have a motion supporting that?
Same.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. That agenda will be set. Once the agenda is set, there's no opportunity to add to it because of the special nature of the meeting. Other than that, I did put in the correspondence, you heard about it at the last meeting, that the State Department of Transportation's notice that they're going to be working on the Wilmington notch. And that will, at times of the day, create a situation of one lane of traffic, there'll be traffic lights controlling that. And that certain nights, they're going to be doing night work, and the road will be completely closed from River Road to the , as is to the High Falls Gorge gift shop. I guess that's because there's so business that can come up there. There's a campsite in there. But it's just for information, and also to get it out front of the community again, as a reminder that that's going on, too. Lots of work going on. Is there anything else to come before the board this evening, before I open it up to our, our audience? If not, Elizabeth, do you have any questions on the board, or anything you'd like to comment on?
I did not. Thank you for asking, though.
You're welcome. Anyone else? If not, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting. Scott, in a second? Peter, all in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions?
It's your chance to apologize, and then-
No, I'm good, Pam.
Okay. Meeting is-
I don't think it's gonna do.
And thank you all.
Good night, everyone.